Good evening, thank you all for being here tonight. First of all, we want to thank for our music tonight. Playing the piano in the back of the room today was Ms. Micah Campion. She's a second grader at Blackburn Elementary. So let's give her a big hand. Well, welcome everybody. My name is Greg Ferris and I am president of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees. And hereby call this Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Certified that quorum is present in the meeting has been posted in time and manner required by law. These monthly meetings are open to the public. Although they're open to the public, comments and questions from the audience will be confined to the time designated to address the board. No voting will take place during closed session tonight. Any action taken by this board will take place as a result of those closed session meetings when we reconvene back into the open session. At this time, I'd like to ask you to bring your attention over here. We'd like to ask our Pastor Richie Mullis if he'll come to the microphone. He's going to lead us in our invocation this evening. Let's all rise.
Good evening. You know, when I first was invited to do the prayer tonight, I really felt led to just pray grace. You know, we throw the word grace around, you know, grace before we pray, grace to be saved, you know, from our sins and all. It does mean that, but the Apostle Paul in 1 Corinthians says something very interesting is 1 Corinthians 15:10. He says, "But by the grace of God, I am what I am." But by this grace... Sorry, my phone went out. But by this grace, I was without effect. It was this grace that empowered me to do what I did. And so grace doesn't just save us from our sins, but grace also empowers us. And so I want to pray that grace over you guys. I want to pray that grace over our teachers, our wonderful administration. I had no idea the police officers were going to be here tonight as well, so I pray that grace, you know, saving grace, but also protection over their lives as well. Can we pray? Father, I thank you for the opportunity to stand before these amazing people tonight. And God, I don't take it lightly. I'm honored to be here. And God, I pray, Lord, for not only saving grace, but empowering grace, enabling grace, that would enable us and empower us to do everything you've called us to do while we're on this earth. Lord, if we've got a pulse, we've got a purpose. And God, I pray for that grace that would empower us to fulfill the purpose that you've called us for. Nobody is here by accident, but we're here on purpose and for a purpose. I pray, God, that together we would reach this generation now, so they won't need rescuing later. We thank you for the grace, God, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Pastor Mullis is one Free Life Church, and we appreciate their partnership with our district. At this time, we're going to have our pledges. I'd like to ask Ms. Jennifer Goldson, Principal of Forney High School, to introduce our Secondary Student of the Month, and Mr. Rod Escavera, Assistant Principal of Griswold Elementary, to introduce our Elementary Students of the Month.
Okay, she asked if I was ready to brag on her, and I am. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, esteemed guests, and fellow educators, it's my great honor to introduce to you our Student of the Month, Annika DeLonge. A senior at Forney High School, Annika is a remarkable young lady with dedicated work ethic and unwavering commitment to her values and community, and makes an impact wherever she goes. From the classroom to working in the front office, Annika demonstrates great responsibility and leadership. She also runs the social media platforms for the FISD Cosmetology Program and is dedicated to achieving success academically as well. Annika's teachers sent great words of affirmation and confirmation that she is an excellent student in person. Mrs. Berry stated, "I am so happy for her that she's receiving this recognition. She deserves it. Annika is a remarkable student who exudes confidence and possesses a deep understanding of who she is and where she's going in life. Her unwavering moral compass guides her actions, and she consistently strives for excellence in all her endeavors. Annika's honesty is unparalleled, and her integrity enriches the classroom environment. I'm thankful she's my student." Mr. Cervantes, her science teacher, says, "Annika is able to exhibit great focus and place her priorities and values above all distractions. She is a positive influence on those she interacts with and contributes to our positive school culture." She also received the highest praise from our Assistant Principal, Mrs. Hannah, when she stated, "Beyond her academic achievements, she is a natural leader who leads by example." Whether it's taking on leadership roles amongst her peers, volunteering to help the APs or office staff in whatever capacity necessary, or simply seeing a need and taking initiative to step up, Annika demonstrates an unwavering commitment to making a positive impact on those around her. In essence, Annika embodies the core values that we strive to instill in all of our students: a commitment to effect change wherever she plants her feet. Annika plans to attend Texas College of Cosmetology in Abilene, Texas. I know without a doubt she will pursue excellence in all that she does. As Mrs. Forney says, "Annika has a go-getter attitude and works hard to make sure her assignments are completed each day. She has such a positive attitude towards her teachers and peers and is always willing to go the extra mile to help. She will go far in all that she does. Thank you, Annika, for representing FHS so well. Once a jackrabbit, always a jackrabbit."
How are you? Good evening. I was asked and I'm privileged to introduce the Student of the Month for Griswold Elementary. When we asked our fourth grade teachers to nominate one, this is what they had to say. They said, "Miguel is such a genuine person. He sincerely cares about his classmates and all the teachers at Griswold. He's a hard worker and always gives his best in every situation. He has such a kind heart." This is what another one said, "Miguel is one of the most friendly students I have ever met. He always says hi to me and asks how I am doing. I love seeing his smile at recess." Here's another one, "Miguel is always respectful and polite to all students and staff. He is loving... He has a loving heart and is kind to everyone. Miguel always smiles and greets all teachers. He is kind... Excuse me. He is the kind of kiddo any parent would be proud of." Another teacher said, "Miguel is such a genuine, kind-hearted kid. His enthusiasm and happy demeanor is contagious. No matter the circumstances, he always shows up with a positive attitude and is ready to learn, even with a broken arm. He has grown leaves and bounds this year, and we are very proud of him." Here's what another teacher said, "In the short time that I have known Miguel, he has demonstrated character traits such as kindness and compassion, which helps foster a warm classroom environment. In short conversations that I've had with him, he has shown a small act... He has shown small acts of kindness through words or actions. He is truly an amazing kid, and I'm not just saying this because his mom is my boss. He genuinely comes in every morning and says hello, and so that just, you know, helps start your day off, you know, when a kid comes in just, you know, driving from God knows where, an hour away from where they live. And so we are very proud of Miguel and for everything that he has accomplished, and we're sad that he's going to be leaving us next year, but congratulations, Miguel."
We have to rise for the pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, state under God, one and indivisible.
of Communications, to share an announcement about Johnson.
Yes, so our Johnson PTO has... would like to make a generous donation of $6,500 to Johnson Elementary School to help fund field experiences, if the board would consider that this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to the section that needs to be presented.
I have a motion by Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Amudia, thank you very much. All board members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much. Move on now to student recognitions. Student recognitions, we have a lot of those tonight. At this time, we'll ask Sarah Smith, if she'll make her way up here. Ms. Smith, Director of Future Readiness, and she will introduce our first group.
All right. I'm very excited. We have quite a few CTE organizations here to recognize, starting with TAFI, our Texas Association of Future Educator Awards. This is actually our very first year for TAFI, and we're going all the way to Nationals. Yes. So we initially had eight students that, from our 800 competitors that made it to state, and from those state qualifiers, we will have three students going on to Nationals in Washington DC. So congratulations to these students and their advisors, Ms. Massengill and Ms. Miller. Good luck at Nationals, guys.
Ms. Smith, I think you have another group to introduce.
I do. The next group they have to announce are our DECA team members, again, a first for Forney ISD, that we have had, DECA Student Organization. So these are all of our state nominees for DECA. They made it past regionals and our state qualifiers, and we have one state finalist. And these are two of their advisors, Ms. Berry and Ms. Golden. Congratulations. Yes, this is our largest group, and it's really exciting. These students and their advisors put in so much hard work and time. Tonight, we are recognizing from the Kaufman County Junior Livestock Show, the students that either received Reserve Grand Champion, Grand Champion, or Best Of in their category. And you can see, it is a huge list of students, that, all the way from welding to rabbits. Yeah, lots of diversity at this show, but these students, congratulations to all of you for placing. And if they're advisors, I know there's a few of y'all here will also come up, Ms. Kenny, Ms. Holt, Mr. X. I know, they're like, no, don't get in the picture, but they also put in a ton of work working with these students. Congratulations.
Now, at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Janey Glanton, Director of Theater, Dance, and Cheer, if she would come to share some awards with us.
Good evening, board members and guests. Forney ISD Fine Arts is proud to recognize our theater, dance, and cheer organizations this evening. Forney ISD Fine Arts would like to recognize Forney High School Cheer. FHS Cheer finished their competition season strong, earning third place in the NCA State of Texas Competition, and top 10 at Nationals. Forney ISD Fine Arts would like to recognize the Forney High School High Steppers Varsity and JV Elite Dance Teams on a very successful competition season. In the Texas Dance Circuit, FHS finished HTE National Champion, JV and Large Varsity Teams, HTE Grand National Champion, with the highest average score for three routines over all divisions. The FHS Elite Dance Teams were also invited to the National Dance Alliance Contest through a participation bid. FHS was one of a handful of Texas teams present and completed their NDA contest journey. NDA 2024 had 3,200 answers, 34 states participating with 560 routines, and 550 coaches. FHS Elite proved to be a strong Texas and national competitor with the following results: fourth place JV Game Day in the Nation, fourth place JV Palm, fourth place Small Varsity Palm, and Varsity Elite winning first place National Champions Medium Varsity Game Day. The FHS High Steppers Elite Teams represented Texas and Forney ISD extremely well. Congratulations to these incredible students.
Congratulations. And then you have one more group, I believe.
Yes, sir. Forney ISD Fine Arts would like to recognize our first-ever UIL Theatrical Design State Qualifiers in Costume Design. From North Forney Theater, Jay Stevens, who is preparing for their bi-district appearance this week and could not join us this evening, and from FHS Theater, Audrey Gersha. These students and their directors will attend the UIL Theatrical Design Competition in May and will represent Forney ISD in the State UIL Theatrical Design Contest. We wish our students all the best as they proceed to the state contest level. Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask our Forney ISD Interim Chief of Police, Mr. Jason Saunders, up to the microphone, please.
I have to put my cheaters on, sorry. Take a badge off. My name is Jason Saunders. I'm the Interim Chief of Police here at Forney ISD. Recently, the department has had a promotional board so we can hire supervisors. It is the first opportunity the district has had to do this. And these gentlemen represent the individuals that... are a portion of the individuals that actually set and tested. It's a day-long process to test out for a supervisor, a whole bunch of individuals involved, not just from our department, but from other agencies within the area that sit and we assess. It's what we call an assessment center. And I'd like to present to you all the individuals that have been promoted to the rank of sergeant. We have Sergeant Brian Burton, Sergeant Austin Shaw, Sergeant Jimmy Parton, Sergeant Jeff Haynes, and Sergeant Kenny Martin.
At this time, I'd like to have a special person to come up here and pin their badge on them. If you've ever been to a pinning ceremony before for a police officer, it's a special moment in their career where a significant other, a relative, a friend, a mentor, actually pins their badge on them to signify that they're starting their career in their new position.
I'd like to also tonight, this is a representation of the newer officers that we've hired. This is not all of them. Some of them can unfortunately be here with us tonight because they're covering district events, or they had some other things that they needed to do. But again, this is a time in a police officer's career where they start a new job, and we afford the opportunity for somebody to come up and pin them. But I'd like to take this time to introduce them to the district as new officers. I will start with Sergeant Shaw and Sergeant Burton are also new. They just happened to get promoted right after they got in here as well, so I do want to acknowledge them as being new to the district. We have Officer David Foster. We have Officer Eric Gerald's. Officer Arturo Fernandez. Officer Chris Comer. Officer Lance Amos. Officer Daniel Cortinas. Officer Jalen Monreal. Officer Brendan Zastepal. Officer Tom Parsons. Officer Victor Bates. Officer Jasmine Copeland. And Officer Shane Pruitt. As with all new police officers, they take an oath of office. Most county-elected public officials do that, and we, as police officers, do as well. So at this time, I would like to take the opportunity to present these new officers and ask them to raise their right hand so I can swear them in. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Police Officer of the State of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and this state so help me God. Thank you.
This time, I'd like to ask a significant other, spouse, or friend to come up and pin them.
as well as our community. These are not replacement officers. These are... this is a growing department, and this is a huge thank you to our community for supporting a police officer on every single campus is where we're headed next year in Forney ISD. So thank you to our community. Thank you to our board for leading this effort, and thank you to the wonderful men and women that we have on our police force. Thank you all for your service, and it's just been a brief time since we started with the first one, and look how many we've got now. So congratulations to you all. Thank you for joining our family. We'll move on now to our next award for staff, our Teespra Awards. Ms. Kristin Zastepal will come to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Each year, the Texas School Public Relations Association, or Teespra, holds their annual conference for over 1,200 school districts across the state. Our team of four was invited to present a total of seven sessions for our colleagues during the conference on crisis communications, bond and vader communications, social media management, video production, and multimedia design. Teespra also holds their Star Awards Recognition Program for Outstanding Education Communications and Projects. Oftentimes, a district may become a powerhouse in a single area, such as videos, photos, writing, but I am so proud of our communications team for consistently bringing home Star Awards across multiple categories. Juan Hernandez and Grayson Reed from our team took home awards in writing, photography, videography, and graphic design. Our Division is for school districts with 15,000 to 30,000 students, so we are a little fish in a big pond. This year, Forney ISD received two Silver, eight Gold, and three Best-of Category Awards for projects completed last school year during 2022-2023. Please help me congratulate our district videographer Juan Hernandez and our communication specialist Grayson Reed for their Star Awards.
I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to say a huge thank you to our school board as well as our community. These are not replacement officers. These are, this is a growing department, and this is a huge thank you to our community for supporting a police officer on every single campus is where we're headed next year in Forney ISD. So thank you to our community. Thank you to our board for leading this effort. And thank you to the wonderful men and women that we have on our police force.
Thank you all for your service. And it's just been a brief time since we started with the first one. And look how many we've got now. So congratulations to you all. Thank you for joining our family. We'll move on now to our next award for staff, our TSPRA awards. Ms. Kristen Zastepo will come to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Each year, the Texas School Public Relations Association, or TSPRA, holds their annual conference for over 1,200 school districts across the state. Our team of four was invited to present a total of seven sessions for our colleagues during the conference on crisis communications, bond and VADER communications, social media management, video production, and multimedia design. TSPRA also holds their Star Awards recognition program for outstanding education communications and projects. Oftentimes, a district may become a powerhouse in a single area, such as videos, photos, writing. But I am so proud of our communications team for consistently bringing home Star Awards across multiple categories. Juan Hernandez and Grayson Reed from our team took home awards in writing, photography, videography, and graphic design. Our division is for school districts with 15,000 to 30,000 students, so we are a little fish in a big pond. This year, Forney ISD received two silver, eight gold, and three Best of Category awards for projects completed last school year during 2022-2023. Please help me congratulate our district videographer Juan Hernandez and our communication specialist Grayson Reed for their Star Awards.
Yay Dad, that's right. Now, our last staff recognition tonight, Ms. Susan Johnson, Executive Director of Strategic Partnerships.
Thank you, Mr. President, Dr. Terry, and Board. Opportunity Central was recently recognized with the Innovation Catalyst Award from the Workforce Solutions of North Central Texas. This award is given to organizations who have demonstrated exceptional ingenuity within the workforce development landscape. It is a recognition of those who dare to think differently, pioneering groundbreaking strategies and solutions that drive progress and transformation. We'd like to thank Workforce Solutions of North Central Texas for the recognition and congratulate the Forney ISD staff and board for all of their efforts and hard work involved in opening up the OC.
Our day-to-day principals, Mr. Young and Dr. Benjamin, as well, were part of the opening of the OC. They just did a little bit of a major. Moving on to item number seven, our reports. The next four items are reports only, require no action from the board. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. John Chase, Chief Financial Officer, to come to the microphone for the monthly financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Excuse me. Tonight's financial report is for the operating results through the month of February. Beginning with the general fund, the highlights, the year-to-date revenue was $127 million and expenditures were $134 million. Some things to note in the fund, we had 66% of the revenue estimates been collected to date, which is about 7% lower than the previous year. And as we pointed out last month, the money that we were receiving additional state aid through that VADER or voter approval tax rate election that we had is totaled about $7.9 million. That funding element has been updated in the state's funding formula, and we'll be receiving those funds incrementally over the next few months, ending in August. Most of the collections that we had in the month were from tax collections, and that totaled about $6.8 million of the seven or so million that we collected in revenues. And our expenditures are trending pretty much as we would expect for this time of year. Moving on to food service, the year-to-date revenue recognized here was $5.8 million and expenditures were $6.6 million. Expenditures exceeded revenue by about $800,000. And again, this is by design, like we reported last month. The Department of Agriculture has a rule that you're not allowed to have more than three months of operating expenses in your fund balance. And if you do, they want you to spend that on the program to increase or improve the quality. So we're in the process of doing that with the funds that we've received. The last thing we'll point out here on the debt service side, we've had pretty major activity in the month of February. We paid $22 million for our semi-annual bond payment. We make payments twice a year in this fund, either in August and February. We're 100% basically expended at this point. Our fiscal year ends in June, and so for all intents and purposes, there won't be hardly any activity other than some tax collections to finish out the year. Revenues exceed, expenditures exceed revenues at this point by $4.8 million. That's for the additional state aid for homestead exemptions that we'll be receiving some of those funds, as well as tax collections, to make up that difference by the time the fiscal year ends. But our fund balance is projected to be $56.9 million at the end of the year. Our August debt service payment is $31.1 million, which is what the board stated goal is, have fund balance in our debt service account. So certainly met that goal, and we're in pretty good shape in our debt service account. And then finally, in our cash and investments balances at the end of February was $357 million, a majority of which is on deposit in our capital project funds. But that's the financial report. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Moving on to item B, master planning update. Ms. Kim Morsec.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. If you'll recall, last month, I did the master planning update and asked you kindly not to ask me any questions. Well, you have Jeff Fisher here this month, so you can ask as many questions as you'd like. I'll turn it over to Mr. Fisher from Gallagher Construction to go over our current plans and construction projects.
Thank you, Ms. Morsec, very much. President Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board, good to be with you again. And if you do have any questions, Jason and Seth are here, and they can answer them. I probably can't, but I'll try, but they'll probably have better answers than me. Go ahead and get started on the status report for this month. The Opportunity Central project, as you know, is finishing up. Obviously, the district has moved in and started using the entirety of the building, and we're working on finishing up some of the items, like the sound studio. That one will go and start commissioning about the 15th of this month. So we'll be getting ready to turn that over to you. And then obviously, we've got some change order type items that we're working on getting fixed and finished and working on punch list corrections and getting everything i's dotted and t's crossed. So everything's going well on that project. North Forney High School freshman addition, similarly, it's complete, working on finishing up some punch list items and some exterior items. But for the most part, everything on that one's tidied up and finished up. Phase two of North Forney High School is coming along quite well. I'm going to refer to my notes so I don't forget anything on that one. Getting ready to put the roof on the gym part of it, so it's a little bit further along than what the picture actually shows here. Press boxes in progress, as you can see in the bottom photo there. And then we're planning on getting started on the grandstands around about the 1st of May, that one. Forney High School freshman center, similar to North Forney's freshman center, it's pretty much finished up, just working on finishing some punch list items and exterior items. But that one's in use, as you know. Forney High School Phase Two, the fieldhouse, it's coming along quite well. MEP overhead rough ends are ongoing. We're preparing to install the roofing on that one and just moving forward toward completion. Teemer Middle School, starting the punch list on areas A through C the end of this month. Then we'll start on punch list on areas D, E, and H toward the end of May. Kitchen equipment scheduled to be installed by the, or starting on the end of April. And then the track and field site prep has started. So those project, that one and really Warren, same. The neat thing, I thought, I was sitting out there waiting on the crowd to disband a little bit, and I noticed as I went by Teemer today and Warren today, if you look at the pictures that are out in the hall, they're starting to look like the pictures. So that's a good thing. Ed Wilson Elementary, starting on the sidewalks and playground and retaining walls on the site work, painting and the ceiling grid in the classroom wings. So working on getting those finished up and getting ready to punch. And then the rest of the building, we're working on getting it closed up and then wrapping up the storm shelter. Think we're going to start painting in the storm shelter soon if we haven't already. Just some more pictures of Ed Wilson. For some reason, Ed Wilson rated three slides in this report, and all the rest of them only got one. So I don't know. Innovation Way expansion, all the paving is down, working on finishing up the sidewalks and getting ready to start installing lights pretty soon. And then we'll follow that up with the landscape and irrigation. But that road's finished and ready to go. And then ray intermediate precast wall panels, as you can see there, are complete and installed. The roof slab has been poured, and then we're prepping the interior slab for the storm shelter, as you can see there on the bottom, to get ready to get it poured. And then, I think that's the end of this, yeah. The only other thing that's, the only other project that's not on this list currently would be the Clay Jones Intermediate renovation. And it, the only reason it's not on here is we haven't started work on it in earnest yet. But we are doing pre-planning and getting materials on order. And we're doing a little bit of prep work on the weekends, but we'll get started on that project as soon as school's out. So be glad to answer any questions you have.
Just one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
With the recent weather and then in light of what's coming with the solar eclipse, do you see any concerns with the time lines associated with these projects or any implications?
No, we really don't. The, you know, weather, we always have to deal with. Fortunately, you know, it rained pretty good yesterday. The wind blew so hard today that it's pretty much dry on all the projects now. So while weather does have an effect on us, most all the projects that we've got going on right now are somewhat enclosed, if not all the way enclosed. So we can continue working on the insides and not really see any problems. The eclipse, who knows? You know, it may be cloudy. It may be cloudy. It may be not cloudy. It's going to be a lot of traffic. So, but hopefully, the one or two days that we have to deal with there won't hurt us too bad. Thank you.
Appreciate that update. Moving on to item C then, Notice of Intruder Detection Audit Findings. Mr. Jason Saunders. I'll go on and do item D. Maybe you'll back here in a second. On item D, it's a school board compliance and non-compliance continued education. At this time, the requirements for training are measured as of the first anniversary date of trustee's election or appointment, or a two-year anniversary of his or her previous training, as applicable. There are seven training areas for each board member's continued education. One, local district orientation. Two, orientation to Texas Education Code. Three, post legislative updates. Four, team building. Five, additional continuing education. Six, evaluating student academic. Seven, cybersecurity. And eight, child abuse prevention. At this time, all board members have completed the additional training education requirements, and I'm happy to announce that I appreciate you taking time to do that and all that goes into that. So thank you, board members, for making that possible. Now, we'll back up to item C, Notice of Intruder Detection Audit Findings. Mr. Jason Saunders, interim chief officer.
President Ferris, Dr. Terry, board members. The top priority of the Forney Independent School District in the state of Texas is keeping students and staff safe every day. The Texas School Safety Center recently conducted an intruder audit at one or more of our campuses. The audit tests whether a campus is accessible to unauthorized individuals. This audit, conducted as part of Governor Abbott's School Safety Directive for all school systems following the tragedy and the novelty, seeks to help districts identify how campuses can improve safety for students, such as ensuring exterior doors locked. This audit provides us with the opportunity to create a safer learning environment for our students and our staff. We are working closely with our district's School Safety and Security Committee to ensure that we are training all our staff and securing our doors for the protection of everybody at our campuses. The support from the state in conducting the Intruder Protection Audit is just one of the many actions we are taking to ensure our schools are safe. We know this work does not end, and we appreciate the board's support. We acknowledge that parents and community members are likely very interested in the details of the audit results. However, it is in the best interest of the students that we do not share this information to the broader public, as it could lead to compromising important campus security information. Specific details of the Intruder Protection Audit were discussed in an executive session with the Directors of Safety and Security Committee. The Forney Independent School District is committed to providing a safe and secure learning environment for our students and staff.
Thank you for that update. At this time, we'll move on then to public forum. Tonight, we have some people sign up to speak. The board will hear comments from the audience only during the public comments portion of the meeting. Individual speaking must be added to the name prior to the meeting, and they did sign up. At this time, we'll allot three minutes per speaker for tonight's public comments. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students and employees and other community members by name. The board requests that the comments on any subject, whether negative or positive, be courteous and respectful. Disruption from this meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operation issue should present that through the complaint, through the appropriate mechanisms. Speakers who wish to speak tonight will please honor the three-minute timeframe. The board may not respond to comments made or questions asked from the public. At this time, our first speaker will be Eric Segovas.
Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the school board, thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Eric Segovas. I have enjoyed the great honor of serving in Forney ISD for 11 years as a teacher and administrator. And tonight, I would like to offer my endorsement of Forney ISD's current superintendent, Dr. Justin Terry, as a nominee for the Texas Association of School Board Superintendent of the Year Award. I understand such a nomination must be approved by a resolution of the school board, so as you conduct your deliberations, I wish to offer my own experience and observation to supplement your deliberations. I would like to focus on two opportunities I have had while working as an educator in Forney ISD that I believe give me a unique perspective on Dr. Terry's leadership as the inaugural teacher of the pioneering Synergy Program and as one of the first administrators in the new Opportunity Central facility. In my experience, Dr. Terry consistently puts exhaustive personal effort into the initiatives he organizes and leads, challenging preconceptions of what education can be in spite of disruptions to the status quo. I have experienced the tremendous effect this has had on students and staff alike. In the fall of 2018, I was given the chance to serve as the inaugural teacher for a brand-new program the district called Synergy. The core concept powering this new class was the belief that student voice and agency could synergize with the real-world needs of the community to create powerful educational experiences. This incredible new course brought students from both high school campuses to this very building, where the students had their own space, serving as both a classroom and an office. Our students loved this class and embarked on some of the most exciting and effective class projects I've ever witnessed as an educator. Synergy students still contact me to tell me what a transformative experience the class was. Faced with the needs of a modern world, Dr. Terry innovated from the Latin root, meaning "to make new," an altogether modern educational approach that carried with it risks for disruption to the provisional environment in which he himself worked. I personally witnessed Dr. Terry visit the Synergy students many times in their office slash classroom, placing a tremendous personal stake in the program he designed and implemented. Throughout my time as the teacher of this course, I saw many other schools from many other districts which professed to champion student voice and agency. But in each of those presentations, I invariably saw adults speaking about the opportunities they were giving their students. In Synergy presentations, the students spoke for themselves about the opportunities available to them in Forney ISD. Now, I am thrilled to be able to serve as one of the administrators of the newly opened Opportunity Central Building. There, I'm able to see every day that same level of personal dedication and willingness to go to profound lengths to empower our students to engage in real-world learning, immediately applicable and transformative to their lives on an even grander scale. But I still see Dr. Terry visiting students in a much larger office slash classroom that is also a workplace slash engineering lab slash auto shop slash salon, placing his personal stake in innovative education that inspires. And I still see the transformative effects of the OC, not just in the lives of our students, but in the lives of citizens, business partners, and families in Forney and beyond. In view of Dr. Terry's pioneering approach to innovation in education and the degree to which I have experienced his own personal dedication to the initiatives he plans and executes, I am pleased to offer my endorsement of Dr. Justin Terry as a nominee for Tasby's Superintendent of the Year Award. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Keith Shaver.
Thank you. My name is Keith Shaver. I would like to speak in the endorsement of Dr. Terry. So during Dr. Terry's tenure with Forney, he has provided service to Forney ISD, which has been truly over the top in terms of innovation, financial stability, and structural guidance, and truthful and timely communications with staff, as well as Forney ISD parents and the community. Dr. Terry displays a unique personal relationship Dr. Terry displays a unique personal relationship with his Friday announcements of what's happening in Forni. With this venue and others, he includes students of all levels, and just importantly, all staff and, and staff and employees. As Forni ISD experienced growth as a result of the unchecked and tremendous housing growth here in Forni and the surrounding areas, Dr. Terry was required to focus on the ever-expanding student population from our community, and he did so with laser-guided vision. Dr. Terry guided this necessary expansion from what I remember 24 years ago, from one or two elementary schools, one middle school, one high school, to now the extremely large number of campuses, the OC, new extracurricular facilities, and as needed, various support resources as well, while, I might add, maintaining strict leadership of fin, of the district's financial and operational goals. His visionary leadership, coupled with his tremendous hard work, and I'm sure late nights with the board of trustees and administrators, have resulted in a school district that can only be identified as number-one district, and simply one of envy from other districts across the state. Having two successful daughters graduate from Forni, with one who returned as a teacher in the district, I know firsthand the benefits that they received from the instruction and opportunities presented by Forni ISD. Having the opportunity to work alongside with many other volunteers of the Forni community to support our district, I have seen and understood Dr. Terry's vision, which was necessary, again, not optional, to provide the needed growth with facilities and financing for the district, and he did it. Now, mind you, not alone. He also had, had to assemble an outstanding team of administrators, support folks, and most importantly, a team of dedicated instructional staff and teachers to make this vision a reality. I have witnessed firsthand his dedication to the students and our district, and we can all see the results of his dedication. I am honored to support the Forni ISD Board of Directors with their nomination for Dr. Terry for Superintendent of the Year. Thank you for your support of the district. And, Dr. Terry, I pray for your continued strength and vision for Forni ISD. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Bruce Bynum.
My name is Bruce Bynum, and I'm here to recommend the Forni ISD Board of Directors nominate Dr. Justin Terry for Superintendent of the Year. My recommendation is based on witnessing Dr. Terry, his excellent character, integrity, leadership skills, innovative curriculum foresight, and Christian beliefs. I have firsthand knowledge of dealing with Dr. Terry's characteristics, experience through working with him on several boards and committees throughout the school district and the community. I worked with Dr. Terry as a member of the Forni Education Foundation, Board of Directors, Elementary School Teacher of the Year Committees, Forni ISD Facilities Committees, and I'm a board member of the Coffin Central Appraisal District that works directly with taxing entity representatives, which Dr. Terry is on behalf of Forni ISD. Through all the superintendent's responsibilities, Dr. Terry's proven leadership is on full display, evidenced through supervision of innovative full-scope curriculum that attracts families to Forni, student growth, hiring educators, support staff, all while managing construction of new and remodeled school buildings. In addition to Dr. Terry's immediate responsibilities, his reputation and leadership results in Forni ISD hosting seminars for other school districts across Texas and the U.S. about teaching techniques, innovative curriculum, school system management, all of which is grounded on love of students being educated to be productive and successful citizens. A school board knows that growth and success of a school district is not possible without an excellent leader, which Doc, which is Dr. Terry. I request the school board unanimously nominate Dr. Terry as Superintendent of the Year. Dr. Terry will be the premier superintendent to represent Forni ISD in Region 10 and the state of Texas. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Michael Jones.
President Ferris, Forni ISD Board of Trustees, and Dr. Justin Terry, it is with great pleasure and immense pride that I stand before you this evening to extend my heartfelt support to our amazing superintendent, Dr. Justin Terry. Being an innovative leader in the ever-shifting and challenging landscape of public education is nothing short of amazing. We are extremely blessed to have Dr. Terry leading Forni Independent School District. It is hard to find leaders these days who are genuine, passionate, and committed to excellence like Dr. Terry. Anyone who is critical of his leadership hasn't walked in his shoes and simply doesn't realize the sacrifice he makes on the daily to make us the school district we are today. He is truly called to be a leader at the highest level, and he does not take the responsibility lightly. I want to take a moment to thank Mrs. Kyla Terry and his entire family for the amount of support they provide him to be able to do the things he does every day. Your sacrifice and dedication is appreciated by all of us. Dr. Terry continues to be a champion for kids and educators, an advocate for public education, and someone who isn't afraid to make tough decisions so that we can be the beneficiaries of this sacrifice. His visionary leadership has transformed our schools and our school district, inspiring our church leaders, business partners, community leaders to join in the effort to provide the necessary supports and quality educational opportunities for all Forni ISD students. We cannot take this for granted. Dr. Terry, your nomination of Superintendent of the Year is a testament to your outstanding leadership, unwavering dedication, and everlasting impact on the lives of those who serve alongside you and all the families in Forni ISD. I accept my heartfelt gratitude for your friendship, mentorship, and the casual conversations about McDonald's and what coffee I'm drinking. May you be blessed beyond measure, just as you have blessed us in Forni ISD. I am proud to know you and work for you. I know that you will continue to do big things. Congratulations, sir. Job well done. Fully supporting you.
Our last speaker tonight, Wesley Benjamin.
Good evening, President Ferris, fellow members of the Forni ISD Board of Trustees. My name is Wesley Benjamin, and today I wish to personally endorse our superintendent, Dr. Justin Terry, for Superintendent of the Year. While I know each of you quite well, I would like to take a moment to introduce myself. First, I'm an invested member of the Forni community and have been since I moved here in 2009. Second, I'm in my 15th year as a Forni ISD educator. In that time, I have served in many capacities, from a substitute, a high school physics and engineering teacher, a learning specialist, a coordinator, a director, assistant principal, associate principal, and I currently have the honor of serving as the executive principal at Forni High School. But my most important role is that I'm a parent of three thriving scholars in Forni ISD schools. So, when I speak today, I'm speaking not from one of these roles, but from all of them. Now, as evidence of my endorsement, I could share Dr. Terry's numerous accomplishments. I could tell you how he has built a culture of excellence, leading Forni ISD to be the largest capturing kids' hearts national showcase district in the nation. I could tell you about his brilliant financial acumen, describing to you how I met with dozens of principals from across the state just last week, and how of all of the districts represented, Forni was the only one that was not having massive layoffs of teachers because of Dr. Terry's financial vision and stewardship. I could talk about his instructional leadership, about how he has led Forni to explosive levels of growth in academic achievement in AP courses, college dual-credit, and industry-based certifications. I could tell you about Dr. Terry's innovative spirit, and of how every week we get calls from educators from across the country wanting to know more, wanting to see the Keith Bell Opportunity Central, which some are even calling the crown jewel of education. Yes, I could tell you many of Dr. Terry's accomplishments, but instead, I want to tell you who Justin Terry is. You see, over the past decade, as a community member, parent, educator, and leader in this district, I've had the opportunity to closely observe him from just about every vantage point possible. Like many of you, I have witnessed his public life, everything from his convocation speeches, community presentations, and yes, his Happy Fri-yay Facebook live streams. But I've also had a front-row seat to see who Dr. Terry is behind the scenes. I've seen how he leads his team to face unbelievable challenges, like steering the fastest-growing district in the fastest-growing county in the nation. I've witnessed him lead late-night brainstorming meetings where he worked tirelessly to find ways not just to educate kids during a global pandemic, but to meet their physical, social, and emotional needs as well. I've seen him mobilize those around him into action in response to all manners of aid, of emergencies. I've seen him work a 14-hour day and then turn around and drive to Austin to advocate for Forni kids, families, and teachers at the state level. I've seen him laugh, cry, win, lose, struggle, persevere, and then persevere some more for our district. I've seen him at his best and at his worst, and after all that, after a decade of witnessing who he is, I want you to know this. Dr. Justin Terry is a man of integrity, ingenuity, grit, wisdom, passion, generosity, and humility. There is no one more deserving of unanimous endorsement for Superintendent of the Year than he is. Thank you.
Thank you all for your words tonight. We'll take that under consideration. Moving on to item nine, consent agenda. The consent agenda, 9A, is approved minutes from the February 26 meeting. 9B, approve the budget amendment. 9C, approve the TEES verification. 9D, approve the bus purchases. 9E, approve crystal furniture purchase. 9F, approve art and education curriculum purchase. 9G, Mesquite Regional Daycare for the Deaf Shared Service Agreement. The board may act on these separately or collectively. Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I move to approve the consent agenda collectively presented.
Have a collective motion by Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burkhalter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 10, consideration possible approval of naming the new stadium. Ms. Susan Johnson, Executive Director of Trade and Partnerships, would you please make your way to the microphone?
We are very glad tonight to be able to talk to you about Baylor Scott &amp; White Lake Point has responded to a Forni ISD request for a proposal for the new stadium naming sponsorship opportunity at North Forni High School. The sponsorship outlines the naming rights as Baylor Scott &amp; White Lake Point Stadium. This is a three-year agreement totaling $54,000 or $18,000 annually. We are asking the board for consideration and approval of this agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Boards, you've heard the recommendation. Any further questions? I hear none. Do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the name of the new stadium as presented.
Have a motion from Mr. Regan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bateman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
We are blessed here tonight to have Donna Cole, president of Baylor Scott &amp; White Lake Point here, and so, thank you so much.
consideration possible approval of staff pay increase.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. We've been working pretty extensively over the winter and early spring to, to develop our budget for the upcoming school year. As we've discussed in our budget workshop tonight, we're, that plan included a 3% midpoint pay increase for our, for our staff. What that would mean for, for teaching, teachers, they would receive, if they had one to four years of experience, they would get $1,800, and from five to 30, it would be 2,100, or I think that's right, 21, 2,300, I think it is.
Five to 30, 2100. 2100.
Anyway, I, my, my apologies. The, the salary schedule is in the, in the, in your board book for, for review. That's what, that's included in that, but it's, it's a 3% of midpoint increase, and so, we'd also like to do that for the existing staff, other staff, that's tied to our pay ranges and our, and our other pay schedules. And so, the total cost of this pay increase, it's about four and a half million dollars, and again, that would be included in our, in our budget that we would submit for approval in, in June. So, our recommendation is us to improve the, the pay, pay raise as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Dr. Terry, do you have any further comments?
Just a few. First off, I've, I've got to start by just, again, thanking our community and, and board for leading us this fall into a tax ratification election that put us in a good financial situation to continue to support a staff here in Forni ISD, I think you heard earlier, and you've probably seen on the news how many districts across the state of Texas are really struggling financially right now. And I'm just so blessed that we're here in Forni ISD and the leadership of this board, and John and his team of putting us in a, a financial situation where we can recommend this without any reservation at all, a 3% increase across the board to continue to support the staff here in Forni ISD and attract some new staff as well.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. Boards, you've heard the recommendations. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the staff pay increase.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burkhalter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to item 12, consideration possible approval of additional FTEs for staff health clinic. Mr. Rick Gere, Chief of Human Services, will be presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. School board, I'm excited to announce the, part of our compensation benefit, benefits plan for the 24, 25 school year, that the district is going to offer a no-cost, convenient alternative for minor and acute healthcare needs. So, as part of this program, you can see several of the things that we kind of listed up here, at that point-of-care testing and any sort of acute illness that the district can provide, it will not replace that, their primary care physicians. But to be able to do this, there, we're bringing to you and are, asking for you to approve three additional FTEs. The clinic will, will be run underneath the medical license of a physician, but there will be three positions from nurse practitioner, also number two would be an LVN or an RN, and our third position that we're seeking is that of a office assistant or office manager type role. And so, that is our recommendation and asking for approval of those three additional FTEs.
Thank you, Mr. Gere. Dr. Terry, do you have any comments?
Yeah, this is a really unique opportunity to remain very competitive throughout the region and the state. As insurance costs continue to rise, we're excited to bring you guys this recommendation for a health clinic and the three FTEs that it'll take to run that. So, we highly recommend the approval of the FTEs as presented.
Boards, you've heard the recommendations. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve-
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the additional FTEs for Staff Health Clinic.
Have a motion by Dr. Eda Moudia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. That's a great addition, and I know everyone's going to be excited about that one. So, moving on to number 13, Consideration Possible Approval of Pace Resolution for Closure Due to Emergency Declaration. Mr. Gere, explain the eclipse.
Yes, sir, that's what I am. You see me now, you don't see me now. So, as it was mentioned earlier, the Kaufman County, we're very blessed, I guess, or maybe, I don't know, not blessed, to have that eclipse coming right over the top of Kaufman County. And so, working with Kaufman County Emergency Team and other government organizations, they are telling us that we could approximately see 200,000 spectators enter our county, and obviously with the potential of gridlock and traffic issues, not that we have any of those in Forney, but this could add some problems for us. So, with that, the county has issued an emergency declaration based on this credible information. And due to the emergency declaration, the superintendent, under the authority of Board Policy DEA Local, has closed schools for reasons of safety and health for our school, our staff, and our community as a whole. But in order for our staff to receive pay for the days not worked, the board must establish a purpose for such payments. In the case of the above school closure mentioned, paying school, excuse me, paying employees for hours not worked will obviously increase morale and increase the likelihood of retention. Board Policy DEA Local actually requires the board to adopt a resolution establishing the purpose and the parameters for paying these employees during the school closure. So, the resolution meets the requirements of our policy, and it is the recommendation of administration that the board approve the resolution as presented in your board book.
Thank you, Mr. Gere. Dr. Terry?
Once again, just have to say a huge thank you to the school board for always supporting our staff and their safety and their families. So, we recommend the pay resolution for closure due to emergency declaration as presented.
Boards, you've heard the recommendations. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the pay resolution for closure due to emergency declaration.
Thank you, Ms. Burkhalter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Moudia, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to item 14, Consideration Possible Approval of ESS. Mr. Gere?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. In Texas, unfortunately, the whole state is facing a statewide teacher shortage. And one of the impacts of that is that Texas districts are struggling to find high-quality substitutes. Each day, a large percentage of our substitute needs are not met, not only in our district, but across the state of Texas. This leaves any school administrator scrambling to try to find solutions to the problem. The substitute shortage has a negative impact on student achievement, harms teacher morale, it creates safety and security concerns for any district, and it impedes the district's ability to actually reach their strategic performance goals. Despite hard work and strong processes implemented by Forney ISD Human Resources Department, the district's daily substitute fill rate was below 70% for the '22-'23 school year. Forney ISD has been diligently researching opportunities and solutions to address the problem. In our research, we discovered that we feel, we feel we have found a viable solution in a company called ESS, which stands for Education, Staffing, and Management Solution. ESS is a national K-12 substitute management company designed specifically to help school districts ensure that they have enough high-quality substitute teachers. ESS has been in business for over 23 years. They work with over 900 districts across the country and regularly achieves fill rates of over 90% with their partners. Here in Texas, they're working with 25 school districts, Frisco ISD, Roy City ISD, and Denton ISD, just to name a few. At Frisco, their fill rate is currently around 95%. In Roy City, they're getting a 91% fill rate. In Denton ISD, one of the largest school districts, around 95% in their district. So, district leadership has requested, in our meetings with them, a customized proposal for the solution and a tiered approach to be able to do this with underneath our budget. We met several times over the last few months, and the ESS has proposed a solution whereby the company will handle all the tasks associated with the substitute program as outlined here. From recruiting and screening, doing background checks, doing the training, the hiring, evaluating, directing, managing, paying, all the HR functions, work with compensation, liability, unemployment, all the things. So, ESS will also provide an onsite team that will support, that will provide the support from the regional and national level to ensure that Forney ISD has the best possible people and possesses the dedication to provide the district with the most highly qualified substitutes possible. Some of the things that we came across, some frequently asked questions as we were kind of researching this process, will Forney ISD still maintain control of the substitute program? Answer, yes. We control all the requirements, all the training standards, pay. ESS is here to carry out our vision as a school district. Will ESS have a local presence in Forney? As I mentioned before, they will have an onsite team that will actually office here at central office to provide support for our substitute program. Is this good for substitutes? Absolutely. They will be paid the same rates, but now will be paid on a weekly basis, not semi-monthly. They will also receive a full, affordable benefits, just an array of that, as well as support services for their success. So, why don't we hire more staff to do this work ourselves, or just pay substitutes more? If you looked at research, it has been proven that increasing substitute pay is not a long-term fill rate solution, because with that, everybody can just keep upping the ante. And as you look at districts that do that, you'll see their fill rates way below that. ESS has the ability to provide weekly pay, as I mentioned, benefits, support, professional recruiting, and world-class training for the substitutes that we'll be providing to Forney ISD. So, at this time, actually in the room tonight is Fred Benson, who is the Vice President of Business Development, has come in today and has been visiting with us on a regular basis to make sure that this partnership that we're recommending tonight will be a huge success for Forney ISD. I'll be glad to entertain any questions about the program or about the partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Gere. Dr. Terry, any comments?
Well, you know, we're just really excited to see some of the success on surrounding districts, especially fast-growth districts, as Mr. Gere mentioned. Filling any roles right now in public education is a challenge, but when you have substitutes that are not guaranteed long-term contracts, like some of our other staff, it makes it even more difficult. And so, we've tried multiple different options, and we're excited to bring to you guys tonight this option of ESS. And I've had a chance to meet with Fred over multiple years now and just hear about his program, and I'm very excited for the research that our HR department has done into this, and happily recommend the partnership tonight with ESS. We'd happy to answer any further questions that you do have, or Mr. Gere, or Fred, well, actually.
Just a quick question, just to clarify. This is a one-year contract to begin with, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
I hear no further questions. Board, do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve ESS as presented.
Have a motion by Dr. Moudia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Dobbs. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much. On item number 15, we're taking no action tonight. Moving on to item 16, Consideration Possible Approval of Construction Bids. Ms. Kim Morzak and her guests.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Yes, as you know, we have several bids to approve tonight, several small ones that Mr. Fisher, couldn't think Jeff's name for a second, will go through, and then the FLA bids as well. He'll go into a little more detail on those. So, Mr. Fisher?
Thank you again, Ms. Morzak. Hello again. As Ms. Morzak mentioned, we have a few small projects for your consideration of approval tonight. I'll just go through those real quick. Adding a playground at Henderson, adding on to the parking over at the Annex for the Police Department. It looked like tonight that you need that very badly by the number of officers that I saw, by the way. Very safe meeting. Tennis court resurface at North Forney, hallway refresh at Forney High School, ceiling replacements at, I think that's North, I mean, at Forney High in...
Clay Jones.
Clay Jones and Forney High. Chriswell portable removal, getting those moved out of there. And then, the last item on there is the FLA. Just a little more detail on the FLA. We put that, hang on. My e just catching up with me. We put that project out for bid and took bids on February the 6th, and then subsequently went through and scoped all the bids. We did get good turnout from the bidders on that. We went ahead and put the budget sheet together, and the total for that project is not to exceed $41,600,000. So, we just would request approval of all these tonight, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Chris, any questions from the board? Do I hear none? Dr. Terry, any comments?
Not this time. We do recommend approval of the construction bids as presented so that they can get started and not be behind this summer, because they've got a lot of work to do, it looks like.
Boards, you've heard the recommendations, and I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the construction bids as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Dobbs, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you. Get to work, Jeff. Moving on to number 17, Consideration Possible Approval of Resolution for Superintendent of the Year, Ms. Kristen Zastul, Executive Director of Communications.
Hello, I'm honored to get to present this this evening. Before you have a resolution, in order for our teams to be able to nominate Dr. Terry for the TASB Superintendent of the Year, it does require a resolution from our school board. In addition to the comments that you heard tonight, I have several letters over here from our cabinet, all of our campus principals, our district leadership teams also lending their support to nominating Dr. Terry for this.
Thank you, Ms. Zastul. Boards, you've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the staff pay increase. Point of order, please.
Yes?
I just wanted to make a comment before we make a motion. I just want to go on record to say, no doubt, we've faced unprecedented headwinds, especially this year in public ed, and there's so much unknown that's most likely to come our way. We're at a point in time where we need to move fast, we need to move forward, and we need to move with a student, staff, and community-first focused mindset. I'm personally excited about some of the vision and strategic approach that you've laid out, Dr. Terry, and the path that we're headed down. I think in the past year, there's been such a hyper-focus on laying the groundwork for such a time as this. I've seen a lot of things over the last year that I'm personally appreciative of around the introduction of, you know, internal measures of success when we are in such a time period with the DEA. The work that's been put forward and hyper-focus on our educators and staff from a compensation and benefits perspective, as well as other support structures that are in the works. I'm very pleased with the improved and elevated communications that I've seen throughout this year, and I'm excited to see that the feedback that I, as well as my peers and others, is being executed into the changes for a greater good for all of us. And so, for me, while this is the second go-round with this agenda item, it was never a question of if, it was a question of when, and I am fully supportive of that when being now. So, I wanted you to know that.
Thank you very much. I have a motion by Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Ms. Burkhalter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Well, thank you all, board, for supporting Dr. Terry, and I'd like to acknowledge that this is a great unanimous vote tonight for this nomination, so Ms. Zastul, you can move forward. This time, we'll move on to item 18, Closed Session. 18A is a consultation with attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code 551071. 18B deliberating regarding ratification of employment of professional contract personnel. 18C deliberating regarding the ratification of reemployment of professional contract personnel. And 18D, Safety and Security Intruder Detection Audit Findings pursuant to Texas Government Code 551076. At this time, it's now 8:27, we'll be convening to closed session. No voting will take place in closed session. Any action the board wishes to take will, as a result of this discussions, will be taken place back in open session when we reconvene. We're now dismissed. So, it's 9:11, and we'll reconvene back into open session. Moving on to item 19, there'll be no action tonight. Item 20, Consideration Possible Approval Regarding the Reemployment of Professional Contract Personnel. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the reemployment of professional contract personnel.
Have a motion by Mr. Regan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Ms. Burkhalter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to 21, Dr. Terry, announcements, please.
Thanks, sir. Just a couple, just to bring to your attention. Don't forget, April 8th, we are closed for the eclipse. However, it looks like it's going to rain. And then, wanted to bring here our attention also to May the 6th is our regular scheduled board meeting. We do have a special call meeting on May the 14th. That is the only day that we have available to canvass an election, so just want to make you aware of that additional meeting that's been put onto the calendar. And then, graduation 3 and 7 Forney High is first on the 24th. So, Mr. Ferris, that's what we've got for announcements. Please take note of some of our upcoming events at the OC that are at the DIAS as well.
Thank you all. It is now 9:13, and we'll call this meeting adjourned.